I thought you were talking to the city manager.
My hair is pretty nice.
I'd like to call his regular meeting of Raton City Commission to order, please. Yes, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata?
Present.
Mayor Protem Schuster?
Present.
Commissioner Chavez?
Present.
Commissioner Jacamo?
Present.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Could y'all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for showing up tonight in person and online. A couple of announcements, all city offices will be closed Friday, November 10th, and observance, Veterans Day. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, November 14th, 6:00 PM here in the chambers. And Mr. Mestes, I got, we got introduction of new employees.
Yes, Commissioner, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Ms. Rachel Wirick. Please stand. Rachel is the new admin assistant and she has been with us for two weeks. And she came to us from the visitor's center. Jamie Pell. Jamie Pell is our financial operations clerk and she's been with us a whole two days.
All right.
So. We also have a new police officer, Dominic Stamiloris. And he will be here at the next meeting and fortunately, he had to work a different shift today. So we'll introduce him in person at the next meeting.
Nice. Well, welcome aboard. Glad to have you all on. All right, let's start with committee reports from commissioners. Commissioner Jacamo.
The Raton Public Service Committee Board meeting that's held on October 23rd, which is yesterday, 2:30 PM. Robin Arzberg, RPS Office Manager, slash bookkeeper presented to and approved by the board, financial and statistical information. She reviewed with the board the budgets for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. General Manager David Seidel gave his report on the new solar farm, starting with, starting with stating that it was produced, it has produced 45,159 kilowatt, kilowatt hours for the month of August 2003. Six of the 46 full days of production was at 2,000 kilowatt per hour, equal to 23%. Unit four, which is the generator, had full production for the month of August, only minor issues. Some debrading was experienced due to the high, high air intake temperatures. When the ambient temperature was above 90 degrees, the production was reduced in time due to Raton's demand being low and reducing risk of pushing power into the grid. Unit four continues to grant cut, since the production and hydro cash usage. Whizman Energy is not looking to call for unit four for the month of October. CB charges stationed for 2022 collected $353.22. 2823 has collected $355.72. One of the chargers seems to be considerably more, pulling in more than the other. Closing the high country, high country meeting with Kathy McQuarrie, Scott Berry, and David Seidel. They are looking to install 45 KV solar system on their existing building, RPS connection. Standard policy only allows up to 10 kilowatt system. They are also looking at grant funding for this project due to the business industry, their business history, the Raton Public Service System project. And there was no scheduled, like we're reading this, but it's up, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Chavez?
I have no reports tonight.
Fantastic. Mayor Protem?
All right. October 7th was the Alternatives to Violence Walk. So if you, if you did not donate to someone who walked, there's still time. Go ahead, put some money and you can call Alternatives to Violence and donate to them. But I walked and it was a great, it was a great experience. On the 13th of, Jolene Green, Ann Tyne, Scott Berry, put together a very good Economic Development Summit. And Senator Campos was there and talked and so was some other notable people. Commissioner Chatterley was there. It was an all-day affair and it was worth going to. Lot of good information. On October 17th was the candidate forum and that was also very good. And we do wish good luck to our current commissioner sitting here. And then on the 18th, the morning of the 18th, was the Planning and Zoning Land Use Officials Training. And I was able to attend that and they discussed several, several action items and changing, increasing some better language in our zoning codes and possibly looking at our zoning and standardizing some better ways to hold those zoning meetings. And I know you were there and we learned a lot, I think. I thought it was a very effective meeting. On the 20th, I went down to Albuquerque to the licensure board. I did investigate trades licenses, but I haven't gotten an answer back yet. It is, for some medical licenses, it is now, you can now fast-track your changeover from a different state to just bring in your license and records of where you were licensed. And the state board will fast-track that, so especially for therapists, that's happening. And they believe that that, if it's not happening already, the trades boards will also do the same. The water board was postponed, which is why Commissioner Chavez does not have a report. It was postponed. It'll happen tomorrow night. That'll do.
That's it? All right. Thank you. As for myself, I did attend the RPS board meeting last night, as Commissioner Jacamo stated. The city manager Mestes and myself met with Colfax County officials last week, one day, discussed partnership on several items and how we could help each other. It was a very good meeting. The Economic Development Summit, yes, attended that, was very successful. Hats off to everyone involved in that. Some great ideas out of there and they think there's some stuff that we can definitely put to use. So hats off again to everybody there. This past Saturday, I did reread the proclamation for the Alternatives to Violence meeting they had, or presentation they had at the Schuler Saturday night. Was attended there and had a good program. Lee Phillips and his crew put on a nice little program there for the community and the work they did. I believe between Raton and Cimarron's Walk, they got a little over $10,000. So that was the most they'd gotten, especially out of Cimarron. They said it was a record breaker out of Cimarron. They got $2,200 out of Cimarron. So that was, that was very good. I have a New Mexico Self Insurers Fund Board meeting next month that we'll be getting ready to go to. And that's about it. Other than that, things going as usual. At this time, we will take items from citizens present. If you've got something you'd like to address, now is the time to do it. However, if it is pertaining to something that is on the agenda, please wait for that item to come up. Do we have anyone wishing to address the commission? All righty. Scene man, we'll move into the business section. Section 7A, deliberate enact on approval of October 10th, 2023, regular meeting minutes. These were presented as are. If there are no corrections or additions, they will stand approved. Hearing no objections, these meetings stand, these minutes stand approved. Thank you. Okay, and this, Item B, public hearing, EPA Brownfield Funding Application Process and Potential Sites. Mr. Mestes?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Commission. This is a funding application that we are going through. It is looking at, as an example, La Mesa Park, the hospital and the little market that's just right north of the visitor's center there. I would like to call George to come on up and quickly address what we're doing.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioner, Commissioner Meeks, Mr. Mestes and Clerk Traheal. In February 22, Keith Zobryan contacted the city of Raton. Staff met with him and we discussed Brownfield possibilities. After numerous meetings and a survey of our city, we awarded a contract to Cardo. And Cardo and StanTech shortly thereafter merged. And we contacted many individuals in our community, La Mesa Park Racetrack, Millies Market. And we didn't talk to the hospital people at that time, but we identified about 30 sites in town that need to be cleaned up. Extensive information was compiled and provided to StanTech. We worked together and to submit a Brownfield grant application for '22. Unfortunately, we were not awarded the grant. We were advised that we missed by six points. It's graded from zero to 170. You have to score a 167 to be awarded any funding, so we scored a 161. We followed up with a debriefing and we were told where our deficiencies were. We moved forward in the process and we're applying for the '24 grant. After, after we signed the agreement with StanTech last year, there was a merger, I explained it to you earlier. Mr. Zobryan moved to another company by the name of CHA, C-H-A. We had further communication with him. We've hired him and the CHA company now to prepare our application for 2024. The grant's currently being reviewed by Savannah Richards from the New Mexico Environmental Department and by Scott Nightingale from Kansas State University. We should have their, their feedback here shortly. And when we get that, we want to move forward. We've got till November the 13th to submit this grant. So we're, we're in hopes that we're going to get it this year. Anything else?
Any questions?
Good job.
All right, thank you.
George, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
And in regards to like La Mesa Park, what are our plans there to do, to take it down? How does that work with the existing landowner?
We have worked extensively with Mr. Vincent, Steve Vincent from, from La Mesa Park. I believe you guys were all provided a copy of the proposed grant application for this year. And for, for, for the La Mesa Park, I was trying to find my notes here. For La Mesa Park, we had talked about using that for possible housing facility for, for a portion of that. There's, there's been talk with Mr. Vincent's son that he would like to use the grants down there for like an amphitheater, motocross races, so forth and so on. There's, there's 200 and plus acres there that Mr. Vincent is willing to work with the city to do something with that property. But it's, it's a great, a great potential. It's going to have some cleanup stuff that needs to be done. So hopefully this ground will help us get some of that done and put that back into production.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience wish to address? All righty. Item C, deliberate enact on resolution 202368, declaring dangerous building located at 220 South First Street, described as Lot 7 in Block 9 of the original townsite. Mr. Mestes?
Yes, this is a building next to the Coors Building to the south. And there are a number of structural issues with it. Last week, the city engineer and I were over at the Coors Building and discovered further issues with the building. Would you like to mention?
Sure. Thank you. Mayor, Commission. So there are actually a couple of issues with this building. This building has a chimney that is falling away from the adjacent building. I have some pictures that you guys can look at. This chimney is about approximately 15 feet tall and it's not supported except at the base that it's sitting on. And so it's at risk to fall and collapse into the building below, potentially injuring or, or worse, life and property. And that's the first issue. The second issue is the roof on the back end of the building, the west side of the building, it has uncontrolled drainage. And so it just falls off the roof and then ends up flooding the foundations of the neighboring buildings, which is causing problems with settling. And it's compromising the structural integrity of the buildings around it. And so these issues need to be resolved and constitute it as a dangerous building per our city ordinance is 151.20.
All righty. On a closing note, I would like to compliment our city engineer on his courage of climbing through the attic of the Coors Building to get these spectacular photographs.
Is the, the plan to like remediate the, the condition?
So ultimately to fix it, the chimney needs to be pulled down. And the gutter needs to be added to the backside of the building and the water needs to be directed to the alley behind the building.
Cool.
I figure if we don't do that, it's going to end up like the Golden Rule, right?
That's right.
Kegged in in the back.
Yeah.
I was down looking at it with the, too, so. But we do need to do something to mitigate all that water.
That's right.
All righty. Any other questions, comments?
I have a question. So when they, because it is uninhabitable and almost inexplicable, is it, I know that in the past, the process has been they're fined or they're cited and then they're given a certain number of days to address the problem or fix the problem. And as long as they're showing progress, then they're given more time to do that. Is that still the case or has that process changed?
You'll have a copy of the resolution that will explain what our plans are at the end.
Right, then it says 30 days there.
Yes.
But I know that in the past, they've been given a lot of, not then in particular, but anybody with that kind of an issue has been given a lot of time to show progress and then maybe given additional time after that. So I just wondered, is that going to be the case or is it just 30 days that's up?
I'm going to take that to George, our Zonian officer, and see if George can address if all proper notifications have been distributed.
We're in the process and that's part of this, this resolution tonight. After this third resolution, if it passes, notification will be sent to the owner of the property. And if they can remediate the problem of the leak chimney in whatever manner that takes, that's, that, that will alleviate the dangerous building issue. But then we, we still have to address the water issue, the drains, the stem from the, the building next to it. So the first thing it has to happen is we have to mitigate the issue of the chimney falling and hurting somebody.
So that's an immediate meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty. Any other questions? Thank you. All right, and then I would entertain a motion. So move on.
No second.
A motion and a second to adopt resolution 202368 concerning a dangerous building and requiring removal or repair. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for zip. Item D, deliberate enact on mutual assistance agreement for inmate confinement between the city of Raton and Colfax County. Mr. Mestes?
This is a, an agreement that we carry on annually to discuss both the care and housing of prisoners at the, at the county facility. And the contractor shall pay the county $99.75 for pull or partial day for each detainee. And that is a slight increase from previous years.
Yeah, discussed this, this morning with Mr. Mestes and Michael Adden, about a $9 bump from previous year. Given the, the way things have been, that's really not that bad. Any other questions, comments?
It's cheaper than hotels, huh?
Yeah, it is. And they get fed.
I'll move to approve the mutual assistance agreement for inmate confinement between the city of Raton and Colfax County.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, deliberate enact on engineering analytics fee proposal for design and construction phase services for pickleball courts. Mr. Mestes?
Yes, Engineering Analytics submitted their fee proposal for this project and we were quite surprised at the cost. It's $117,500. It does cover, you know, the full scope of pre-construction services. However, because of the cost, I'm not sure, I think this might be something that we would want to postpone while we await the results of the Quality of Life Grant.
Yeah, the price to, to give all the, and what this can, can entail is field survey reconnaissance, geotechnical investigation, which we require, all plans and specifications, the big package being put together on that, and then construction management for a total of 117,500. Yeah, I would like to at least postpone until we see if we get this grant and we can move forward. And then, then we need to, to seriously look at this proposal and see if maybe another site might be more might be, yeah, might be cheaper. But let's see what we can do, but let's definitely put this on hold until we get notification of that grant because I'm not going to commit $117,000 if we don't get that grant. So this time I would take a, a motion to postpone.
I have one question. When do we, when do we expect that information? When are we going to get that?
I thought it was supposed to be out by-
It's soon, isn't it?
Yeah, it's soon.
By the end of this month. Mr. Berry, do you have any?
Mayor, Commission, we, they haven't told us when they would make an announcement on it. There's two things. There's a short timeframe if you're awarded the grant to perform. And there's somewhere and there's a mistake in there because they, we have one set of documents, they said it has to be done by June of 2024. That's, you know, six months from now, so that's probably wrong. But because they put a, a short performance time on there, I'm, I'm going to guess that they've got to make an announcement fairly quickly. I mean, we, we've got a good project, I think. We've got some optimism. You, you don't know though. But I think the announcements were coming before the legislative session, I would guess.
Yeah.
Excuse me. I thought we were kind of led to believe that we needed to hurry to get the application in because they were going to make the announcement soon.
Right.
So.
Well, I, I know it's a disappointment to pickleball people, but I also believe that we've worked enough with engineering analytics that they would, would hold this
Yeah.
if we postpone it until we know whether we've got the money to actually finish the project. So I will move to postpone till we are notified regarding the grant.
Yeah, motion and a second to postpone the agreement between Engineering Analytics and the city of Raton. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hopefully we get that grant information soon.
Yeah. No kidding.
Item F, deliberate enact on quote for city hall phone system upgrade. Mr. Mestes?
Yes, this is the upgrade from analog phone lines to voice-over internet protocol. Mr. Welch has researched a lot of different companies and has come up with the recommendation. Would you like to address the situation?
Mayor, Commission. Our phone system is over 20 years old and I'm not sure if you've heard the stories, but recently we've had to scour the internet through eBay to get parts to keep it on life support. And so, modern technology that, over the last 10 years or so, has, everything's been moving to voice-over internet. And so we would like to modernize the phones here at City Hall. It includes everything from the police department all the way to RPS. And it would basically eliminate the need for our switch rooms for our old phone systems, which have a hefty maintenance fee that we pay every month. And this upgrade would save almost $700 a month. And it has no upfront costs, so it's all tied in. Since it doesn't have any upfront costs, they require a five-year agreement. And so we would be on the hook for the next five years.
Do we have the old punch board circuit back there where you punch the, the lines into the things?
Just about.
Because I used to do that kind of stuff with the mine, you know, you had a little special tool and you go in there and hit that wire and pop it in there to get a line.
Yeah, no, it's not quite that antiquated, but.
If it was, I could give you a hand there, but yeah. No, I think this is very much needed and long overdue.
Thank you.
And it's saving $700 per month.
Yes.
That's always a plus.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve. We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement on the city hall phone system upgrade. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item G, deliberate enact on consensus planning proposal for GIS services. Mr. Mestes?
Yes, Raton is needing geographic information systems services, GIS, for digital zone data from the existing 2009 zoning map, identify updates and changes to the net map and provide the city of Raton with a file to upload into a modern system.
All righty. Again, this is something that we are behind the times on.
Yes.
Very much so. I think the last time the zoning map was updated, Mr. Berry, I might have been working for you. And then I think I've participated in the 2009 survey when I was working for Mr. Shields.
It's been on the to-do list for a long time and finally made it up for, for action. But I would just say that that map, the 2009 map, has- But I would just say that that map, the 2009 map, has many mistakes on it, which is a chance to clean up those mistakes.
Absolutely. Again, this is bringing us into the modern era.
I will move to approve consensus planning proposal for GIS services.
A motion and a second to approve the agreement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item H, deliberate enact on agreement between the City of Raton and Department of Finance and Administration for appropriation number 23-ZH5050-16 for local match assistance for Schuler NEH federal grant. Mr. Mestes.
As you know, this has been something that we have discussed in the past, and it was on hold, and now that there is no need for a fiscal agent, the RFP is out, and we're going to apply for matching grants for plumbing and electrical.
All righty, yeah, any questions for Mr. Berry? Do you remember, we got a notification when the budget came through that we, or when our audit came through, we had a finding that they said, you're going to have to have a fiscal agent, but there was a, I'm not going to say, an error on the auditor's side, but it kind of was.
Misunderstanding.
A misunderstanding. There you go, very good. Misunderstanding with the auditor, but we've got that squared away and everything is kosher, and now we can proceed, so. I would entertain a motion.
So move.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement between the City of Raton and the Department of Finance and Administration for the appropriation. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Item I, deliberate enact on capital appropriation agreement number 23-H2941 between City of Raton and the Department of Finance and Administration for public works equipment. Mr. Mestes.
Yes, this is to purchase vehicles and public work maintenance equipment, including a tractor, mower, multi-skid stair, cover jetter, and other snow removal equipment, and I think we're getting two plows out of this for $60,000.
All righty, yeah, this was something that was on the ICIP and all that, and we submitted for, and I don't know how much of that equipment we're going to be able to get for the $60,000, but we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
We'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement between City of Raton and DFA for public works equipment. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item J, deliberate enact on recommendation of award for Kearney School RFP specialized professional services for the renovation of the historic Kearney School facility. Mr. Mestes.
Yes, we put together a committee for this recommendation for an award, and there were two companies that submitted, that responded, Baker Architects in Design and V. Hill and Associates and the Architectural Group. The proposals were evaluated by a four-person committee, and it was unanimous that V. Hill and Associates were selected as the group to carry on with this very important project for the city.
And this is an exciting project. So I will move to approve a recommendation for award to V. Hill and Associates Architectural Group, BC.
Second.
Motion and a second for recommendation of award to V. Hill and Associates Architectural Group. Is there any further discussion? This is another project that's been a long time coming, and finally getting some action on it. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item K, second reading of ordinance authorizing the City of Raton to enter into a loan agreement with the New Mexico Environment Department for the purpose of obtaining project loan funds in the principal amount of $150,000 plus 1% accrued interest and loan subsidy, for a total amount of, an accrued interest and loan subsidy grants amount of $50,000 for a total fund amount of $200,000.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioner, this is the same ordinance that we had at the last meeting, except now it's new and improved with an amortization table to go with it.
All righty, and this is a public reading of the ordinance. I'll just give you the introduction, and then we'll go from there. There's no action to be taken here. This is ordinance number 1024, authorizing the City of Raton, the borrower to enter into a loan agreement with the New Mexico Environment Department, NMED, for the purpose of obtaining project loan funds in the principal amount of $150,000 plus 1% accrued interest and loan subsidy grant funds in the amount of $50,000 for a total funded amount of $200,000, designating the use of the funds for the purpose defined in the most current project description form as approved by NMED, declaring the necessity for the loan, providing that the loan be payable and collectible solely from the borrower's pledged revenues defined below, prescribing other details concerning the loan and security for that purpose. This was the second reading of that ordinance. I'm thinking it comes up next meeting for vote.
Correct.
So, this is for the Schuler project, right?
No, this is for the, the, the-
Purchase of this-
The truck.
Yes.
Oh.
The, wait, sanitation truck.
Sanitation truck.
Yes, sorry, fill in the big word for me.
Yes.
Yes, never mind. Yes, you're right. It is, the sanitation truck. Item L, deliberate enact on Resolution 2023-69, disposal of a surplus ladder truck. Mr. Mestes.
Yes, we have a 1993 Sutvan aerial ladder truck, which is in poor condition. Even though the mileage is low at 17,133, it's something that we probably do not want to repair. I think we need to dispose of this vehicle.
Yeah, I was reading their, their little blurb there, and it said the ladder's basically falling apart.
Yes. It's no longer safe to operate.
It's no longer safe to operate.
Yeah, I guess that's not really funny.
No.
Especially if you're on the ladder.
I will move to approve Resolution 2023-69, disposal of surplus ladder truck.
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-69. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item M, deliberate enact on Resolution 2023-70, approval of fiscal year '24 first quarter financial report. Michael Ann.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. In your packet this evening, we do have the first quarter financial reportment department report. Goodness, it's been a long day.
It's contagious.
Reconciled through the month of September, September 30th. So in your packet, I do have the general fund summary. You will see that our general fund ending cash balance as of September 30th was $5,686,041.21 less our required 1/12 reserve, which is based on our budgeted expenses in the general fund. We are required to maintain $632,560 in cash, but as you know, the ending cash balance is probably five to six twelfths above that. We did budget this year, a little over $1.6 million out of reserves to address various community needs, and so, we're currently working on those. Some of those projects you've talked about this evening, obviously, some of the improvements to the ball field, obviously, some of that is still going to be on hold in the pickleball pending your action tonight, awaiting the announcement of the Quality of Life grant. So, and then, of course, as we enter into the winter months, it's a little bit harder to do some of the outdoor projects, so some of those will be put on hold until probably closer to the spring. You'll see the general fund gross receipts that we did receive in the month of October. This does reflect your August business activity. We're just slightly above our budget projection, 0.75%. We do have the two street projects, the Sugar Reed Avenue and the East 10th Frontage Road Project, that still have some ongoing work, so we should see some GRT returns still coming in over the next couple of months for those two projects. And then, we'll be awaiting the property tax distribution, which we get the first half usually late December, early January. You will see, I did make a note there that our general fund departmental expenses, you know, looking at the first quarter of the fiscal year, we're 1/12th, or we're 3/12ths into the fiscal year, so when we look at our budget balances, everything should be roughly about 25% of budget. Our expenses are currently tracking about 18% of budget, but as we've discussed in the past, this is mostly related to vacant positions in the police department and a couple of other departments. Our first quarter report is due to DFA by December 30, geez, October 31st, and we will get that in by the deadline. I've also included in your packet the New Mexico Tax and Rev GRT comparison report. We have a lodger's tax comparison report. Our lodger's tax is, for the first quarter, down about 7% compared to last year. I still think that this year, we'll still be on track to collect probably over $500,000 in revenues. Gas tax, the distribution for the month of October was $17,093. Previous year in October was about $21,000, so we are down slightly compared to last year. And then, our cannabis excise tax for the month of October, we collected $5,052. I've also included the unaudited financial statement in your packet. You'll be able to see our reconciled balances to our bank statements, and then the balances in the individual funds. Is there any questions?
I don't have any.
That's great, thank you.
As far as grants, we are still working to complete the work at the senior center. We do probably have close to about, I actually got the third reimbursement today, but we do have a balance of about $30,000 to expend in that grant, so we've got till June 30 of 2024. So we're working with the architect, Alpha Design, and our current contractor, Mozark, to possibly do a change order, but we need to evaluate the needs of that facility. We've looked at potentially replacing one of the double ovens, floor replacement, various other things to spend that money. So hopefully, we can make a decision. We probably would need to take a scope change back to aging and long term, but I'm pretty sure that as long as it's kitchen-related-
Yeah.
They would approve that.
I think we could, if it was kitchen renovations, especially like if you did the floor part, I don't know if $30,000 would-
Yeah, I think we're not real sure that $30,000 would go far enough. It would to help replace the double oven-
Yeah.
But then, there would still probably be another $20,000 left after we did that, so we definitely want to expend the full amount of the grant funding, so we'll be exploring some ideas on that.
All righty.
Okay.
We'll entertain a motion to approve.
I will move to approve Resolution 2023-70, approval of FY '24 first quarter financial report.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2023-70. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item M, deliberate enact on Resolution 2023-71, fiscal year '24, budget adjustment number three. Michael Ann.
Mayor and Commissioner, so we do bring to you our budget adjustment number three for consideration. Within the general fund, we just have some line item adjustments. At a previous meeting, we did approve the award of the law enforcement recruitment funds that we were awarded. This is a three-year grant of funds. Year one, we will receive 100%, then year two, 50%, and then 25% after that. So our year one distribution is $225,000. All of those expenses, we need to add to the budget, because we didn't previously have this in the budget, so you'll kind of see the breakdown. The grant can cover all salary and expenses, so that's what we're proposing there. And then, also, at a previous meeting, we were awarded funds for the bridge replacement project, and so, the matching funds for that project do come out of the Fund 217, which is the gas tax, and then, the project itself is budgeted in the 305. And so, that project is estimated to be about $531,326, including the match.
All right. Any questions for Michael Ann? It is contagious tonight.
I know. I'm tired because.
I would entertain a motion.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-71. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to item O, city manager report. Mr. Mestes.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioner. The city government is continuing to collaborate with Colfax County, like we discussed earlier during our semi-monthly meeting last week. Mr. Mayor, Chair of the Colfax County Commission, and both respective managers decided on five areas to focus for collaboration. Those are economic development, infrastructure, ports to planes, the film project at Kearney School, and housing. Also at the city, we're taking a collective look at our projects on the macro level, and we're working with close, we're working closely with the department heads to prioritize and accelerate completion of several projects currently in the works. Some are well on the way and will be of benefit to the community. Once we gain some traction and finish these projects, we can then redirect the resources to supporting, you know, new initiatives elsewhere. And of course, you've all seen the whiteboard in my office, and I look at it every day and encourage you to update your thoughts when we complete those tasks. The big rocks around the city, with the treasurer, the audit team has arrived in Raton, and they're starting with power utilities and will commence with the city soon. In the police department, the city will have two officers graduating from the academy on November 27. The city will also, is looking at the use of technology, kind of as a force multiplier in order to fight and deter crime. With the fire department, of course, you all saw the new city's new ambulance, and it should be completely outfitted, worst case, by November 30th. Hopefully, it'll be done way before then. Public works, paving of the Frontage Road is complete, and they're working on the punch list, lighting, and of course, the striping. Engineering, the filter plant tank grant meeting was held in Santa Fe, and I appreciate Scott accompanying us on that. Him and Jayden went to talk about the grant, and we got some very bad, very good feedback. With facilities, the Kearney School project will be led by city engineer Jayden Welch, and the clerk is developing a records management plan with the library to help archive all those boxes of city records that we have back there. There are several grants closing out. We did meet with the city financial advisory committee- We did meet with the city financial advisory committee yesterday, and we'll be reviewing the upcoming grant report before we report back to the city. And of course, as you mentioned, the economic summit in Raton was, on Friday, October 13th, was very successful. In mentions and dispatches, Jolene Green is leaving the city to pursue other opportunities in the healthcare field. Officer Protsman has left the City of Raton Police Department, and Desiree has completed clerk's training in Santa Fe last week. I'd also like to recognize contracted employee Anthee for work on the economic summit and the candidate forum. She did an outstanding job, and I'd like to thank her publicly for that.
Tice.
Tice, sorry.
Tice.
Tice, sorry. Closing thoughts? Well, we close out the month of October, we're closing out Polish-American Heritage Month, German Heritage Month, Latin American Heritage Month, Hindu Heritage Month, Italian-American Heritage Month, Filipino-American Month, and my favorite, what I call Ricktoberfest. It's my birthday. As you recall, the mayor did a proclamation for National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in late September, and I'm wearing the pin tonight as a reminder. We also use the month of October to recognize victims and raise awareness about the devastating impact of domestic violence. Domestic violence has touched my family, and it sure has touched and happened in many of yours. Though we seek to generate additional awareness each October with friends and family members impacted by domestic abuse, I think, you know, I want to say we want to support throughout the year. There are lots of resources available online, and I invite the community to join me in committing to learn more about the scourge on our city and what we can do to help. And that is my report.
Very good, thank you. Yes, like I said, I attended the event Saturday night. They always do a good job.
They do.
They do. Commissioner Jaco, any closing comments?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chavez?
Nope.
Mayor Proten?
Well, the reason I wasn't there Saturday night is because I went to the witch walk, which was also put together nicely by-
I'm going to refrain from saying anything. A second.
It was fun.
I bet it was.
Main Street did a good job.
I saw some pictures. I saw some pictures. It looked like it went off great. I have no further comments. With that, this meeting is adjourned.